Thanks for dropping that for me, John Mark. Listen, we're so thankful to, grateful to be here tonight and for our city council. We have a full, we'll have a full agenda plus we have a full group of city council here. And we welcome all of you who are here to observe and maybe make comments. We will start by having a, we'll start by having a pledge of allegiance. We've asked one of our citizens, Steve Freebarren, if he'd lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thanks, Steve.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. We're privileged tonight to have Reverend Lynn Briggs with us from the Episcopal Church of the Resurrection, and she's going to maybe make an announcement, then she'll offer a prayer for us tonight. Thanks so much for being here, Reverend.
I'm always glad to be invited here. The Church of the Resurrection is just down the street in Centerville. We're a small church, but we do wonderful things in our community. And one of those wonderful things is the third Wednesday of every month, we serve a community dinner. We cook up a big, big meal and open up the doors and whoever walks in can eat, and we regularly serve 150 meals that night. It's a wonderful time for people to get together who are lonely, for people to get together who are hungry, and for people to get together to serve each other and to get to know each other. We are about to put on our 100th consecutive meal, and I'd like to invite you, city council, if you would like to, we're inviting dignitaries from around the area to come and help us celebrate that night and serve on the serving line. So you will be receiving an invitation to that. It's always a fun, kind of chaotic evening that feels, you'll feel good once you, once you leave, and full, you'll be full of good food as well.
What was that date?
March 20th.
March 20th, thank you.
Yep, we started this in November 2010. It's been, it's been a wonderful partnership with the Bountiful Food Pantry, actually. They provide some of the food. We collect monies to give back to them so that they can provide more food.
Thankful for, thank you for all that you do.
You bet. We enjoy doing that. Let us pray. Oh God, the Creator of all people and all things, we come before you with grateful hearts for those who serve on the city council for the good of this community. We ask you to send down upon these people here gathered the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that they may make wise decisions for the well-being of our society, and that they may fulfill their obligation to protect the rights of all the citizens of this community. Grant them courage and grace in the exercise of their duties, and bless them that they may be at peace among themselves, and that the council be a model of respect for the dignity of every human being. Give us all the desire and the means to be excellent stewards of the resources you have given us. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. I might add that you're right there on the border with us, aren't you? So, yeah, so we're claiming you as well, okay? Even if we just touch your, just touch the parking lot, we're counting you. Okay, thanks again for being here. This is our time for public comment. Again, the, this can last up to 10 minutes, but not more than two minutes for each individual. There is a timer here, and we'll, we'll open that up and ask you to state your name and where you're from, your address, and Steve, thank you.
I would love to go first. My name is Steve Freebarren, and my address is 2992 South 400 East, so just at the top of Lewis Park. I saw on the city council notes, the reason why I'm here, is I saw the word utopia and bountiful. Those are two words that I hope will grow closer together in the future. I came just to share my previous experience with utopia. I lived in a city where I had utopia, I think it was about 2008 that I first got it. By 2010, I had a gig up and down, and at the time, businesses that I was dealing with in California were like, like when I say these businesses, it's like Technicolor and Deluxe, these huge multimedia corporations, between 20 or 30 sites had a 10-gig connection, and they were like, no, you're wrong. There's no way you have a gig up and down. And I was like, no, that's what I have, and it's crazy fast. And so they'd have me do tests, and they'd be like, wow, how did you get that? What is that? And I'd explain it to them, and they're like, wow, I wish California would do that. But anyway, I would love to have additional options. I've talked to both of the monopoly telecoms that we usually deal with, and they have several thousand dollars to even come to my house, and that's not a strange story for the people in my neighborhood, which is not on the very edges of the city, it's right in the middle of the city or in a main part of the city. But I had nothing but good experiences. I had, about, at that time, I was about 600 times faster than the average person with the phone company, and about 40 times faster than a person with a traditional cable company connection. And I think that the internet is as important as electricity is, and it would open up a lot of business opportunities for people at Bountiful. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Steve. Any others? Please, Ron.
I wasn't going to talk, but when I hear utopia, I think of empty, a deep pit with no end to it for taxpayer funds, and the cities that have had utopia have had tremendous problems. Please do not consider signing on to that failed system. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ron Mortensen for the minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Ron. We got you. Do you need, do you need any more? Do you have an address? You don't need it. We're okay? Okay. Any others? Would like to step forward? Okay, if not, we'll close that public comment period, and I'll ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting held on December 11, 2018. Are there any corrections or additions?
I just wanted to make sure that Susan Becker was actually here for that meeting.
She wasn't.
I looked for her and never saw her.
I didn't see her. But we did approve that her appointment, but did it say she was there?
It said she was here.
Oh.
Yeah. So if we could strike Susan Becker's name from the others present, not that that's a big deal, but I just personally looked for her and didn't find her.
Yeah, but it's also good that you're, thank you for being so observant. And any others, corrections or additions before a motion?
Happy to make a motion that we approved the minutes as they're printed with that one correction.
Thank you, Richard. And a second?
All second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The minutes have been approved.
Mayor, could I say also on the record that
Please.
she wasn't expected to, I mean, it wasn't necessary that she be here?
Right.
I don't want to make it sound like she was absent and should have been here, but I just
Thank you.
So, anyway. Maybe a meaningless clarification.
Uh huh. Our Bountiful Youth Council reports.
Yes.
We'll turn that time over to you.
Thank you. We have two representatives here from the youth council. If you guys would please come up, and before you give your report, if you would just both say your name and tell us what's going on with youth council.
Hi, I'm Kathryn Peterson.
And I'm Aubrey Kenny.
And so on the youth council, a few weeks ago, we were able to meet with the mayor and his council, and we were able to ask questions and learn more about how the city works, and it was really a great opportunity for us to learn more about the functions of this, the city council and what they're doing within the city to help improve things and make the city a good place to live.
Okay, and for one of our next upcoming activities, for BCYC will be, on the 26th of February, we will be going to the Capitol, and it's called the Day at the Legislature, and we'll be learning about all sorts of things and be able to ask questions and learn stuff like how a bill becomes a law and things like that, and we're super excited to make that happen and learn lots about that, so, yeah.
Thank you Kathryn and Aubrey for being here today.
Hold on a second. What day, what day are you coming up to the Capitol?
I believe it's February 26th.
That, and it's so fun, have you done that before?
I have not.
So, so you two girls, so where do you go to school?
I go to Bountiful High School.
I go to Woods Cross.
Oh, okay. I was thinking that you might maybe Viewmont and Bountiful, because I think there's a pretty big girls' basketball team at Bountiful tonight between Viewmont and Bountiful.
There is, yes.
Yeah, it's a pretty big, so I kind of thought, you don't want to talk too long, you want to get to the game.
It's okay. We're happy to be here.
Okay, we're really appreciative that you're here.
Well, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
If you'll have your advisors tell them to look for me when you come up to the Capitol, I'm there all day, every day during legislative session, I'd be happy to supplement whatever tours and discussions you're already having while you're up there.
Great, thank you.
Sounds great.
Thank you so much.
Bye now, thanks.
Thanks.
And we will have council reports, and Richard, we'll start with you.
The historical folks of the city in two different organizations would respectfully request that it be easier to locate any historical page or link on the city's webpage. I think now there's a link under government, and that's the link to the, anyway, will you look at that? Maybe have Shawna look at that? Maybe find them a easier-to-navigate location that's more intuitive to people like me who are really old and semi-dull? That would be great.
Just a, just a suggestion, I wonder if, I know there's a section, Boards and Commissions, I wonder if that would be a good place?
It may be there also, I don't know.
It would be appropriate for the Historic Preservation Board, but not for the Historic Society, which is a separate organization.
Okay.
So it should be on the Board and Commission page, but we can do that, we can figure out a way to make it easier.
Awesome. I should report back that we had a great second board meeting for the Historical Commission. Minutes aren't ready yet because I'm in charge of that, but they will be shortly, and we'll see what we can finagle you into doing for us.
Hey, Richard, incidentally, it seems like I've been getting more and more emails from the state folks.
Yes.
And are you getting those?
Yes.
You've seen, it seems like we've received an increase of those, and I'm always nervous of whether everybody's getting that or not, or if I've needed to pass them on, I sometimes will send them to
We talked about that as well, because everyone on the, on the board seems to be experiencing the same increase.
Okay.
And I think that somebody at the city probably got our email addresses submitted somewhere so that we could stay informed.
Somehow.
So thank you for that.
So I just wanted to, I just wanted to confirm that we're getting, that we're all getting those, and it's not on all on me to make sure that I get those distributed out, because they look important
You look at the ones you want to, and
And opportunities, you know? I'm happy to be at any of those meetings if I can, so.
Perfect. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. John Mark?
No report.
Yes, and Kendal?
I have nothing, thank you.
Chris?
Mayor, I'd like to just thank the Street Department for the way they cleaned the snow out yesterday, and the black streets that we have, I think we need to give an applause out to them, and actually, when they're going down your street, would you wave at them? I had a neighbor come over last night and said, there's a difference between Bountiful and Centerville, and I says, what's the difference? He says, I was driving from Centerville through the snow and slipping and turning until I hit Bountiful and everything was good. So there is a difference, and our city does great, I think, with plowing and keeping our streets nice and black. Thank you, Dan.
Good. Sounds like a trio here, Kendal, and Chris, and Kate. Kate?
I guess we were meant to sit by each other then.
Yeah.
I have attended my first mosquito abatement district meeting. It was interesting, they are very sad to lose John Mark Knight. They told me I've got a lot to learn and big shoes to fill in that role, so I look forward to learning a lot more about mosquitoes and what we are doing to kill them.
Being in the insurance industry, John Mark is very knowledgeable about blood-sucking parasites.
There you go. Okay, thank you all for your reports, and we'll, we'll look at the weekly expenditures of approving those that are greater than $1,000, paid December 31, 2018, and January 7, 2019, and the November 2018 financial report.
I had a quick question. It's okay if, if you don't have this answer in front of you, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if, Gary, if you, if you wouldn't mind answering the question, on the first page, the page where it says paid December 31, I'm just curious about the Davis County, where it says the printed Davis County directories, public notices, is that for public notices in the paper, or is that something to do with like the phone book?
Gary, I can answer it if you want me to.
Oh, thanks, Galen.
I think it's just how it's worded, it's usually not worded this way. We have our listings in the Davis County Directory, the South Directory that comes out, that's the, you know, fairly thick directory that's from car printing, that has a yellow page section that has our at-a-glance city listings, and then throughout it, there's listings just like the other cities in the local area. And so that is what, that particular one is paying for, the City Hall listings and all the ones that are the main listings.
Thank you.
And may I follow up that question?
Please.
That also includes their online or digital directory as well, is that right?
I believe we're still
So the city's presence is there?
I think it's both.
Okay, thank you.
If there aren't any other questions, I would look for a motion.
Yeah, I move to approve those expenditures made the 31st of December, 7th of January, and also the November financial report, as branded.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That also is approved. One question I had when I was looking through that, when it talks about the purchasing of the power, and there's about three of them there at the bottom of, I think, page two, are those just normal numbers? I mean, they're big numbers when we're purchasing those power, the power from U-Ams and so forth. Do, do they fluctuate very much? I just haven't, I really haven't noticed that very much. Is that pretty much usual, Gary, or Lloyd?
They do, they do fluctuate a little bit, depending upon the block of time we have to, we're paying for, and so that spread that you see there isn't atypical, you know, $150,000 to $450,000. It's all budgeted for and included in, you know, our plan for, there is a certain amount of our power that we plan to purchase every year
Right.
so that we're not overproducing to follow the market.
Do we tend, do we tend to get more of that this time of the year versus any other? Is that, that's pretty consistent through the 12 months?
You'll see more power purchasing typically in the summer than you will when, because our peak is typically in the summer with air conditioning and those things, so.
Right, okay.
But that's, that's pretty typical.
Okay, that was just, it was just, just looking at it, just
It's a big number.
Yeah, it's a big number.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a big number. So we will, we'll turn some time now on item number six. You, Alan, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. By way of background, several years ago, we had a great Utah shakeout exercise, and we ended up over at the Police Department in their Emergency Operations Center, and we discussed communications and the challenge of maintaining communications, and we identified as one critical goal for our department was to end up with at least two redundant fiber connections. So at that point, we just had a very small fiber connect, or internet connection, wasn't fiber, 3 megabits per second, that gentleman earlier was talking about, huge bandwidth, 3 megabits isn't much more than the old dial-up speed, and that's what we currently have with Integra, but it's a, it's not really designed as our biggest pipe of internet service. So we've had Comcast for quite a while, we have had issues with them on and off, and we ended up with a fiber connection through CenturyLink at the Police Department. It's a 100-megabit circuit, but we don't have that redundant fiber. As was explained in the staff report, if we have two fiber circuits coming in different directions, with latest technology, we can automatically reroute signals, internet, phones through another provider if necessary. So as we have been working on this project, looking at all the vendors and options, we've also dealt, worked with the Engineering Department and Power Department, as they've been working on the Alpha Graphics Project, rerouting the power over there, trying to get fiber around there. We've had Americom weigh in on how much it would cost to get fiber from the fire station up to the Temporary City Hall location, going up First East from there, and every option has been pretty cost prohibitive. So then we had been talking with Utopia, we started talking with them a couple of years ago, and they pointed out that their business model has changed significantly since they started the huge installation of Brigham City and Centerville and all the cities that we know of as Utopia cities, and they're still installing about 1,500 home-connected fiber installations a month now, but they've also branched out to maybe 20 or more cities, municipalities, and other, other customers. So we talked to them about maybe bringing in a fiber circuit for Bountiful City, not to provide service for the city, all the customer, all the citizens of businesses, but just specifically for the city. We know that we kind of stirred things up. We understand, Shawna has told us that there's been a lot of chatter on Facebook about, hey, we're getting utopia in the city. That's not what this contract is about, it's just about providing services for the city for internet service, and then also the additional is Veracity would be the telecom provider that will ride, that will send their phone signal across this utopia circuit. Again, the advantage, one of the huge advantages is if Utopia or CenturyLink, either one went down, we could be up and running pretty quick with all phones and internet. One other item that wasn't mentioned in the staff report was working with Chief Bassett. He has said that they've had utopia service in a couple of their fire stations and have had no problems whatsoever. They're anxious to also get that service, the fire station, that's going to be one of the main links, since they're, they were already linked to our fiber network. Our fiber network goes from here up Main Street, turns down the street at the fire station, heads up to the Recreation Center, down past Power and everybody else, but once we get fiber, it's actually going to be coming into the fire station and linking from there over to the Temporary City Hall and the Plaza eventually. But Jeff Bassett was anxious in partnering with us and sharing some of the costs of this fiber installation. That wasn't included in this, this total package, so right now, we're paying about $2,375 a month, and we propose that we enter into this contract with Utopia to install fiber and provide internet service provider services along with Veracity. It's not a huge savings, a couple hundred dollar savings a month, but the speeds will go from 200 megabits per second through Comcast to a gigabyte. So when the previous guy was talking about a gig here and a gig there, a gig when I was a kid was a job on the weekend playing in the bar. Things have changed quite a bit, terminology is hard to keep up with, there's a lot of technological advances that are available that we haven't made use of, and so we put it to the council to approve this contract. Any questions?
I appreciate your thorough report, and I appreciate that you got other bids too, from other providers, and so for the service they're providing, it's definitely looks like it's the best deal for what it is, and I also appreciate your clarification, that's not a citywide plan for residents, it's just for the city's internet needs and phone needs. But I did have a question, there was someone who contacted me from the Utah Taxpayers Association asking about the legality of us doing business with Utopia, and so I asked, I asked Clint right before the meeting if he would be willing to just look into that, and if you're willing to share what your perspective on that.
Sure. Do you just want me to give you my opinion, or the analysis as well?
I would love to hear it all.
So Councilmember Harris provided me some information, and I do apologize, I just got it within an hour or two ago, so I haven't had the time to extensively research it like I would, would like, but the short answer, before I begin, is just, is I don't have any concerns about the, you know, any illegal contracts. What she's referring to is somebody provided some information to her, Utah Code Section 10-18-303, subsection 7, says, "A municipality may not offer to provide or provide cable television services or public telecommunications services to a subscriber that does not reside within the geographic boundaries of the municipality." I think you don't really need to go much further than that, because if you think about the model of utopia, you've got, I think it's 11 cities that have contracted through interlocal agreement to provide the services that they provide, which means that they already provide services beyond their geographic boundaries. That alone, I think, is a substantial rebuttal to that concern that was proposed. If you look at the definition of a subscriber, I would just note too, that's in Utah Code Section 10-18-102, and it, it says that a public telecommunications service means the two-way transmission of signals, signs, signals, writing, or images, sounds, messages, data, or other information of any nature by wire, radio, light waves, or other electromagnetic means offered to the public generally. So if Utopia falls into that definition of public telecommunications service, again, I would refer back to that initial definition that says may not provide services to a subscriber. Subscriber is also defined, subscriber means a person that lawfully receives, receives public telecommunications services. Bountiful City is not a person, Bountiful City is a municipal corporation, so there's another reason why I don't have concerns. And then finally, if you look under 10-18-105, Utopia appears to be exempt from those requirements anyway, based on what is referred to as a wholesale exemption. They're providing things wholesale, apparently, and so no, I don't have the concerns, and even if there was concern, it really would be on their part, it's, the statute says that it shouldn't be provided, we're not providing anything, we're just receiving a service. So hopefully that answers your questions, I'm happy to expound or answer any other questions that there may be.
It seems like there's been discussion for more than a year now, among some officials of the state, that Utopia has, had expressed interest to, that they were looking to expand their business to municipalities, and
Yeah.
I mean, it's not something that's just coming up right now, it's been discussed for a while.
Based, again, I only started looking at this an hour or two ago, but based on what I can see, there's about 20 municipalities in the state of Utah right now that are engaging with Utopia for services that appear to be significantly more than what we're talking about here.
Huh.
Caysville City is one of them that I could find, Riverton City, and a few others that I was able to see, but I was able to find some information that it looks like there's at least 20 of them that are going through some sort of a process. I can speak for Caysville City because I know a lot about Caysville City, I know that they issued an RFP looking to actually deploy throughout the entire city, so.
And they were not one of the original member cities?
They are not.
So I, just speaking personally, I love the opportunity that this gives us to provide better service at lower cost to the city, and I'm still 100% opposed to obligating taxpayer funds to build out our entire city's infrastructure.
And to be clear, Alan already was, but to be clear, the only taxpayer funds that are being obligated are being obligated are to fulfill the contract for the internet service that we would be receiving. There's no obligations to become a Utopia member, there's nothing like that.
Yeah, thank you.
I would like to echo what Councilmember at the end of the row said, in that I also share concerns about a broad deployment across the city, and that I understand this is not that discussion. And that any discussion like that ought to take place over a long time, and with thorough study about whether that's the role of the city, or whether private businesses can play that role to provide that service, and whether the marketplace can be competitive enough to provide that. I did wonder, in that Utopia's price point is so low for the speed they are offering, compared to the other speeds and the price they're offering, and I'm wondering if we are being offered a really great deal in the hopes that they may find favor at some later date to deploy.
Sure.
Broadly.
And I think that wouldn't be prohibited. They would just have to come through and get a franchise agreement with the city and operate just like Century Link or the other ones do.
They actually already have a franchise agreement with the city.
Meaning that individual residents can...
Well, they haven't really done anything with it yet, but they have a franchise agreement that's substantially, if not exactly the same as other providers.
That allows residents of their, you know, individually...
That allows them to deploy within the city, within the right-of-way, just like any other franchisee would be able to do.
So if a specific, if one individual resident wants, really wants Utopia, they can seek it out and pay for it and get it?
Potentially, yeah.
One other thought about the costs that they've offered. One opportunity that they have to cut the cost is there is conduit going from freeway on the west side of I-15, about 400 north, all the way through the new UDOT project up along Fourth North, that they have a lease agreement with UDOT to be able to access. So they can run the fiber through the conduit that's already existing and pretty much connect right at the rec center, which we have fiber to.
And Alan, you mentioned that the South Davis Fire was interested in splitting some of this cost, so...
Yes.
While I am very interested in a good deal for the taxpayers of Baniffel on the internet, the city needs to operate the city's functions, does that mean that the Utopia fiber portion of 1,083 a month would be less because the fire district would split that cost in some way with us?
We've talked in theory with Chief Bassett recently. They're very interested, and I think they might be willing to pay $200 a month for maybe a quarter of that speed, or 100 or 200 megabytes. And we do have the capability of cutting it that way and giving them that part of it, but we haven't fine tuned that. One other thing I wanted to mention is, Utopia can only provide a fiber connection to citizens, to businesses. A government entity is the only one that they can provide internet service provider solution for. Most Utopia customers throughout Murray, all these other cities, they pay two payments. They pay one to Utopia for the fiber connection, and they may pay Xmission, or Sumo Communications, or some other provider that actually sends the signal to them. So that's just another interesting twist, is municipality is one of the few entities that they can provide internet service providing services, and that's based on their agreement with the state of Utah.
So statewide, that's the case?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, so those cities that are pure Utopia cities, their residents are paying two bills?
Mm-hmm.
Huh, thanks.
It's, the easiest way to understand it is, it's kind of like an airport. The city builds an airport, and then they lease space to different airline carriers. Same thing. Utopia builds a network, which would be the airport, and then the different carriers come in and lease the space.
Alan, industrial scale wifi, like is in the Delta Center, or whatever it's called now, Smart Home, Vivint, what megabit?
Industrial scale wifi, most wifi can operate maybe to 100 megabits per second, so a tenth of the speed. Typically, it's 54 per second for most, the average access points.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. So there aren't any other questions?
Alan, can I ask you one question? Let me ask Alan a question. At the end of the nine-year contract, then, do we renegotiate it? Do we have an option to maintain where we are, or is it totally negotiated at the end of nine years?
We can renegotiate it. They haven't given any promises what may happen at that point, but they say that we're essentially paying them for the installation of this. That's what their construction cost shows, $127,000. I know they're making some money in there somewhere, but at the end of that time, they said it could be a significant decrease in cost. The other thing that they told us is, is we pay for that link that's going south of the plaza, over to First East, and then kind of backdoor into the 150 north main temporary city hall location. Once we're done with that, and we just connect directly to the plaza, they said just that link might be $50 a month to continue that signal to the plaza. And they'd still get the one gig, or whatever portion that we left over after, given the fire station sum, but that's a very great opportunity to provide phones and internet at the plaza that we're going to need ongoing.
Yeah, that was the reason for my question about that scale of wifi. That'd be a nice service to offer if it's affordable. So a significant part of this contract, the monthly payment, is the financing of the construction costs, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. I will then look for a motion.
I'd be happy to make a motion that we approve the contract with Utopia, with the terms that are listed here and presented by Alan, for the period of nine years.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
And thanks for all the explanation from Clint and yourself.
Thank you for your great questions, too.
Appreciate it. And we'll turn to item number seven over chat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, this is St. Olaf semi-annual request for a special event liquor license. This will be held on April 27, 2019. We routinely approve these each year, and we are recommending approval.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And Mr. Chaney, our city engineer, please. Item number nine.
Thank you. We're waiting for the projector to warm up here for a sec. It's okay. We'll just turn your attention to the packet. On the back of this item for tonight, this first item, which is a release of easement on Monarch Drive for Mr. Terrence Holbrook and his neighbor Steve Broderick.
Move to approve. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nicely done, Lloyd.
That motion passes. Lloyd, well done.
I'd look for an assist on the next three, too.
No, no, no. You have to work for those.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, next item, number nine.
Let's get to some meat and potatoes here. Last fall, we were, the engineering department was approached by a company called Aqua Efficiency. And I have to apologize because I misspelled their name in your memo. But Aqua Efficiency is a union between an industrial consultant and one of the local civil engineering firms that's well-known and well-respected in the hydraulics, municipal water side of things. They're a big consultant for many of the large cities. But this union between these two companies has a particular, particularly interesting business model of going to big industrial users or communities and analyzing their water system for either procedures or equipment that can save energy, and that translates into money, because that's really what a water system is, is just a consumer of energy. Now, we have a particularly complex water system because of the topography that we have. There's not very many cities in the state that can say that they have 200 PRVs. And a PRV is a piece of equipment which removes energy from the system, energy that we pay to put in the system by pumping to a reservoir from either a well or through a booster station. We have a lot of, a lot of those. We have eight wells and, you know, about 36 booster pumps. That's a lot of energy to buy and then just disperse through a PRV. So they've given us a proposal, and included that in your packet, to spend some time with our water department and conduct some seminars to, number one, help educate our staff of good operating principles, and to help give them ideas of things that they can watch for just in their day-to-day operations that will save energy costs in our water system. But really, the meat and potatoes of this study will involve the use of our computer water model. And we've enjoyed having a good water model for many years, was developed by Dave Wilding and fine-tuned by Todd Christensen. And the most recent addition to the engineering department, Brad Clausen, Brad has a very unique set of tools in that he came from a consulting engineering firm where he spent a lot of time working with models, and it's my intent to assign Brad to this project because he has that particular skill set, and will be very good at it. Now, what's the benefit to this? I think the best comparison I could make to you would be to compare it to the road survey that we did a few years ago. You know, we received some criticisms about the conditions of our road. We went to a third party to analyze that, and when it came back, the results were very good. You know, number one, they told us our roads really weren't that bad. Number two, they told us that what we were doing was on the right track. So this study is really an opportunity for us to apply the same principle to our water system. And what I suspect is that we're going to do both those things. We're going to find out there are things we're doing very well, and that we have a fairly efficient operation, but we're going to come across some methods and some equipment that need to be changed so that we realize greater savings. And that's really exciting to me because not only do those pay back immediately, but they pay back continuously, and that will pay for this study. Now, I mentioned the funding portion of this. Last year, as Paul worked with Mark Slagasky on the water department budget, they were very, shall we say, I would say conservative, when they set the expected metered water sales for the water department. And they budgeted about an extra $100,000 in income, expected income above the previous year. And here we are, we're, you know, roughly halfway through the year, and we've already realized an additional $90,000. So, you know, water sales are looking up, pork bellies are up. And that additional income can help to pay for this study, in addition to the realized, the actual realized savings that we hope that we discover.
Lloyd, could I ask you a question? When I saw that, does that mean we're becoming a cleaner city because we're taking more showers? Where's this $90,000 coming from?
Rate increase.
From where?
A rate increase.
Oh, it's a rate increase?
Yeah.
Part of it is a rate increase, but also we do sell additional water. You know, we do develop, there are more homes, there are more apartments that come to our city every year, and they require additional resources.
Lloyd, I think also, it may have been mentioned in here, I think in the back, but in speaking with Mayor Arvey, that they did this, basically the same thing in North Salt Lake, and realized a huge, over $100,000, it seems like to me.
Yeah, in three years, it was like $476,000. It was a phenomenal amount of money.
Altogether for those years, so it sounds like, and this is the same, this is really the same group of people who are analyzing ours, and if there's anybody that's maybe comparable, North Salt Lake is coming off those hills and so forth, they might be a good, they might be a good model.
I think so.
For us.
Question, if I could?
Sure, please.
The, will they be just studying electrical and mechanical equipment as part of our system, or will they be evaluating main lines and turbulence versus laminar flow? How in-depth do they go into our nuts and bolts?
They can do that if we request. This part of the study is not going to get that involved.
Okay.
It's, you know, if we really wanted to lay out some cash, we could have them do that, but we're not going to get that level of detail for this level of expenditure.
This is kind of exciting to me. Also, how do our current pressure regulating devices dissipate the energy?
They vent it out. I mean, it's, it is a valving system. So there's a bonnet in there that regulates the flow that goes through. It's a lot about velocity and pressure drop across those valves. So, but it's dependent on the demand coming through.
Business idea for you, Lloyd, with your technical background, micro generators in place of these regulating valves.
Yep, they're out there.
Oh, never mind. Forget about it.
Good idea.
Any further questions for Lloyd?
No, this is cool.
Okay.
I'd love to make a motion that we approve the budget for this study.
Please, and a second?
I'll second, but only if he writes a newsletter about this interesting topic.
Yeah, there you go. Okay. Well said, Kate.
Awesome.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Lloyd, and next item.
Just one little item we need to bring up on this previous motion. We were introduced through Councilwoman Harris to this company, so there is some knowledge there.
Yeah, yeah, I want to disclose that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the disclosure again? I missed it.
I, the man who is, who approached the city about this study is a friend of mine.
Oh.
Yeah.
Kendlin, everybody is a friend.
So that wasn't a disclosure as much as we wanted to give credit where credit was due.
That's awesome.
Bringing it to our attention.
No, this is, I mean, I'm a nerd, but this is really cool to me, that we can see those savings. I mean, this is going to save us money going forward for a long time.
Mr. Chaney?
I'm sorry, just while we're on the, before we, it'd be great, I'm sure eventually we'd love to hear an update if you, when you get one.
Yeah, we'd be glad to give one to you.
Thanks.
Excellent, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please.
Our next item is the approval, the final approval for the Seifert subdivision. You may remember back a few weeks ago, we brought this to you for a preliminary approval, and now we have received the construction drawings and the final plat. It's a small three-lot subdivision, kind of on the south, I don't want to say west, but it's not really west, you know, 725 west and about 3,300 south. We've reviewed those drawings. There's really no issues. We, you know, we tried to make you acquainted with the scale of the development at the preliminary approval. Really, the only issue related to the construction of the subdivision is the fact that the developer's engineer has shown a small retaining wall along the south right-of-way line for the cul-de-sac. And that presents a little bit of an issue because there's only a one foot, just a little over a one-foot space between the right-of-way for the cul-de-sac and the actual subdivision boundary. So that begs the question, if in the future, some council, some very thoughtful council decided that sidewalk was necessary around that cul-de-sac, it may complicate the installation of that sidewalk because of the grade differential there. They're proposing about a four-foot tall wall, and they've identified it being installed as rocks. Well, a rock retaining wall is typically fairly wide and would eat up some of that real estate and force the sidewalk to be constructed against the back of the curb for at least a portion of the cul-de-sac. And so as we've reviewed that, we would recommend that that wall be revised to a vertical product, either concrete or... a modular unit that would require less width and fit in that space better, but we're also working with the engineer to maybe massage the construction drawings a little bit and reduce that cut so the wall wouldn't have to be quite as tall, but really that's the major issue for the construction of this subdivision, the planning commission sends it to you with a recommendation for approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
It was a unanimous vote on the planning commission.
Thank you.
Mr. Seifert was not at the meeting Lloyd and I wondered if we had reached out to him and gotten his opinion on that substitution of the retaining wall for the rocks.
I spoke to his engineer during the week, immediately after planning commission meeting and they had been in touch and I didn't sense any frustration or consternation about that and I think that by just massaging the grades in the subdivision, we'd reduce that to an absolute minimum cost differential between rock or a modular unit, they're very, they're very similar in cost, construction-wise.
So does, is the planning commission requiring a sidewalk?
No, there's no requirement for sidewalk.
Okay.
There's no sidewalk in the neighborhood at all.
I would like to point out that Lloyd said that at some future date, a thoughtful council might require a sidewalk, which means that this unthoughtful council will not.
Yes.
Was that the implication there?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Please forgive me, sir.
Okay.
So I'll look for a motion.
I'd be happy to make a motion if no one else wants to.
Thank you.
That we approve the final plat for the Seifert subdivision with the seven conditions that are listed.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, you're just a little early.
Too many votes.
Two, really good. Last item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, now this item is completely self-serving to the engineering department, I specifically pointed out in our memo the age of our fleet, although none of them are shiny new, they're all in very good operating condition, but it, as we have discussed, the needs to replace our vehicles over the years, Paul and I came with the idea that we would replace our favorite and beloved Jeep this year, but as we've re-discussed this item, my staff feels like the Jeep is really a vehicle we ought to keep because it's very good for our interns, we use it to transport all of our traffic counting materials, you know, the tubes and the counters themselves, gets around town great, turns, has a nice sharp turning radius, is not a manual transmission and really works out good for us, we've decided the proper vehicle to retire would be the more battered and bruised Ford F-150. So we solicited bids from, from some dealers that participate on the state contract and we got three back, they were all Ford bids, we didn't get anything back from any of the Chevy or Dodge dealers, I'm not understanding why that happened, but Larry H. Miller Ford was the low bid, as you can see, and we've also allocated some money in our budget to equip that vehicle, it's primarily, this new vehicle will be used by our Public Works Inspector, Reed Bangeter, and so he has equipment for surveying and surveying supplies and shovels and, you know, other pieces of equipment that he needs to take with him, so we've got some other accessories included in this, the approval of this item to properly equip that vehicle. Be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Lloyd, the 2001 Ford is manual transmission and you make the comment, this feature has proven to be a challenge for past interns to drive a manual transmission, I'd be more than happy to volunteer to teach your interns how to drive a manual transmission.
Wow, that's...
Does anyone know what a compound is?
Oh, yeah.
I bet if you ask one of your interns, he'd have no idea what a compound is, they know what D-R-N? We okay with that?
Two, one, yep.
Hey, listen, they had a couple of people on the TV the other night, young people, trying to figure out how to use a rotary phone, so, you know, it probably goes along, hey, so, performance Ford, we were getting bids that were outbidding locally, we were, they were outbidding for awhile, where are we with that Lloyd? I mean, it's, I didn't see that, they're just not competing.
Well, they are, they are the third bid listed on your memo and we actually went back and revised the equipment listing on the truck that we wanted, thinking that, you know, maybe that would help them stay in the game and it didn't, they weren't able to or weren't willing to massage their price down enough to really be in the game.
Okay.
We did give them ample opportunity.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's all we can do, so, I mean, that's fair, so, we appreciate it. I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the purchase and cost equipment of a vehicle for the engineering department with the possibility of being manual transmission at the cost of $35,234.
That's, do I have a second to that?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the...
Please.
That we approve the purchase and cost equipment of a vehicle for the engineering department from Larry H. Miller at the cost of $35,234 and that it be an automatic transmission car.
Thank you, is there a second?
I feel comfortable seconding that, I was feeling like I might have to interview your kids and see how good of a teacher you were at driving a vehicle.
Yeah, right.
How patient, so with that change, there's a second.
Maybe one little bit of discussion?
Okay, please.
The difference in cost from the high bid to the low bid is less than 1%.
Yeah.
Any thoughts on that?
I still...
And what is our legal obligation to accept the low bid?
You can accept what you want.
I'm glad you're going with the low bid.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
I was just going to add that if the council isn't accepting the low bid, I would, it would be nice for an explanation, an articulation of what the reasons were, but...
Larry Miller says he's in Bountiful and he's not, he's actually in...
We like to support a Bountiful business when we can.
Yep. Any further discussion?
I think the fact that the staff made an effort to see if, if they described it differently, if the bid changed, I think, I applaud that effort to see if we could support a local vendor, but still the low bid is probably what the, what's the best choice there.
Great point, Kate. Good point. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just have a procedural question, did we vote, for some reason, I'm forgetting, did we vote on number nine? Was there an actual, I remember a...
It was fast, that's the one that he did.
I remember the motion and the second, but I don't remember voting, okay.
We did, and I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, that was a good night.
Yeah.